There are no minutes of our last meeting. So on to department reports and.
I know. I know.
Well, the police chiefs, the. Good evening. Nice to see you all first. Fire Department continues to be busy. Answered several calls in the past couple of weeks. Most notable was a couple of fires out in Marine. And we responded mutually to one of the structured fire, save the house. Could be fired. You probably saw that on the news with the. It'd be kind of nice. So if we ever need a ladder truck in town. Training this month. And for a deal as a Bureau of Labor standard. Training also were. Doing some wildfires up at Highmore Farm. Or brush fires every year. Last day, but it's towards the end of the month. Our Fire Department annual dinner, I'll be sending out a formal invitation. Have you guys? It's gonna be at the Memorial School. It's gonna be Saturday, May sixth. On your radar. I'd love to have you. The new venue for us. So we're not sure how it's gonna flow and go, but hopefully we'll have a good time.
We owe the RSU a thank you for letting you guys use the.
You had to fill out a permission.
We had to fill out an application. But we have a couple firefighters that are staff members. So we got the short application version.
It's Saturday, the sixth at five.
More of a part. Nine eleven Memorial Committee has been working behind the scenes. Hopefully break ground in June. I wanted to ask for. What that process is to put a memorial. Building plan, the planning board.
Going on town.
It's just me there. So I might have a question about property. I'll give a date and ask about that. I just wanted to make sure I do everything appropriate. Again, those funds were raised. No money or expense to the town. We've ordered the stone. A backwater. Open habit by nine eleven. We'll keep you all informed as we progress, but it's going right at the front. Exit station to the front left arm. By our side door there. Our community dinner went well. Had over a hundred people. It was like a hundred and nine. That with all the takeouts and firefighters. Had a little hitch and a giddy up before serving food. The tones dropped for that structure firing, I mean, so. All the firefighters had to leave, but a few behind, the auxiliary members to pull up. Successfully. Each party committee is in full swing. We have now flyers here pretty soon to solicit donations for that. We have quite a bit in the. Offer from the previous year. So get enough to get started and get things going, but. Definitely want to replenish it as we go forward. I was just talking to Dan Dutton. We're actually gonna build a fourth float this year. I just ordered it. So. Going bigger. Doing that for safety reasons for the for the fire technicians so that they got a place to set up their equipment. And kind of be able to back off where they're actually shooting the fireworks. Pretty close. They pick up a lot with the mortars and everything. This will be a. What flow kind of at a T in the middle and they can put all their equipment have safety. Prices of lunch still. Paid twenty five hundred dollars last time per float. Now they're forty one. But that's what. They're well constructed, so they're worth the last eleven. And the last thing I got is just kind of put on your radar. We are planning. Behind everything. Get on and. Which is the twenty ninth. Any questions?
The other day when I was in the town office. We something else. Speaking of property lines, did the lady from Dawn's Electric. Reach out to somebody saying. About where the property line is between the station. I think she mentioned, I overheard the conversation that there's a tree down and she wasn't sure where. Property line is to know whose tree is what. I assume so. I mean.
It's no trees up.
Exactly. But somewhere, yeah. And so I don't know if. You have noticed anything or where the tree originates from. So.
I can check.
Yeah.
I mean, it kind of goes diagonal hill. Goes diagonal. We went through this when we did the whole.
Yes, exactly.
I got a good.
Idea. So that might help because she feels maybe that.
Pretty much all the trees on that hill towards the back are on their.
Their property. Okay. All right. You see somebody out and about. Just I think she was interested in knowing who that was. So thank you, Dan. Getting him a pen.
Oh, you got two.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll.
I handled three hundred and five calls to service. Did up one O U I R F, one arrest for domestic violence assault. Four arrests for violating conditions of release in reference to domestic violence charges. And one arrest for operating, having suspension in an unregistered motor vehicle. If you remember, February, we had, I think, two hundred and sixty calls to service. So up quite a bit in the month of March. Last month, Officer Bachman attended a one day Glock armorers course. So he is certified in. Our service weapons now. So he can actually service them to work on them. Under the Glock standards. As you all know, I. Monday morning, I was, Tuesday morning, I was sworn in as interim chief over in Mather. I'll be working closely with them for the next. Couple months. While there, they decide what they're going to do to fill that position. One of the, one of the topics of discussion that has come up, and I think you're all aware of it, and the possibility of sharing chief's position. Between Monmouth and Windsor. Starting July first, I would assume that would be what the goal would be. Coming into the new budget year. But it's all subject to. Managers getting together and working out details and see what the benefits and what. They are, what they aren't. It's all a work in progress that. All new ground to me. So. I just want to let you guys know. So be on your radar screen. So you guys wouldn't be surprised. Coming up on. April fourteenth. University of Southern Maine is going to be at intersection of Maycomb Road and one thirty five. Doing a distracted driving survey. If you remember, they did that last year. I brought up to this year, they condensed it down to a one hour period, and they're gonna be. All over Kennebec County. So if you see someone standing out of that intersection, that's what they're doing. I mean, the one hour survey to see. How many cars pass through and how many people are. Driving with their cell phones or. Doing what they're not supposed to be doing.
Chief, are they looking to document trends over time, like year over year stuff?
Yes. Yeah. And they're hitting the same spots this year that they did last year throughout the state. So. You may see in the month of. The next following hour. Basically, that's what I have. After you guys tonight, unless you have any questions.
Would it be helpful for us to instruct the town manager to have a conversation with Winter Town Manager regarding the feasibility of. Sharing police chief position?
Forward on it. I think they, we had one meeting and. The town manager over in Mather was supposed to reach out, but our town manager. After his meeting with his council on Monday night. So I'm sure he'll be getting a copy of your bill.
Do you want an official motion or is just, I could just kind of get heads that you're interested in that discussion so that I know that I can bargain in good faith and bring you something that has. Has some teeth to it for you to discuss later on. Is that?
I think that's good.
That works. Thank you.
Joe. You, Joe, are you in favor?
Yeah, I think we're all on board. We talked about it before, sharing a lot of stuff with the two departments. So it's. Really nothing new. And. I always thought it was a great idea.
I mean, we're officially moving forward.
Beth? Do you want to?
Well, yeah, we're trying to switch over to springtime operation. Obviously, by the nature of it, it's not cooperating. But we're still fully geared up. We're cloud and safe. There's hopefully tonight's the last night of that. We've been out. Justin may have, we've been out, we've been grading. Most of the two we haven't been on yet, but we'll be on them Monday for sure. And then we're gonna go back to the roads we've already got once and just try to keep working them. Been lucky that there was not a deep frost this year. So we're not seeing the huge eaves and mud pits that we've seen in the past. So we're hoping to get ahead of them. Snowbanks receiving, we're going around town, straightening signs, replacing signs, picking up all the wooden tree limbs we can from the roadsides and. Continue to do that. And with the winter we had and the way things went, you know, a lot of the shoulders are pretty tore up on the road. We need to do a lot of shoulder work this year on every town road. I don't think we'll get to everyone, but we're gonna try. Try and cut them down and improve grain engine. Go over there. So that's a long term goal for the summer. One of our twenty ten international truck is down and out right now. It's over at Fleet Truck being diagnosed. And they're. They're busy, but it's been there a week. They've worked on it, but they don't have a diagnosis for it yet. Won't have rush night storm. Or potential storm, but we are down that truck at the moment. As far as the transfer station, I had two employees start, one yesterday, one today. They are regular part time employees. I'll be working every day. The transfer station is open. Hopefully they'll last. I'm like the previous year we hired in the last six months. I have a good feeling about him. Or he has a good feeling about him. We both interviewed him and. The first day, two days, and first day of the other have done very well. So it's encouraging. Hopefully that. Facility will be fully staffed for the foreseeable future. Pretty much all I've got at the moment. Questions?
Questions? Thank you. Hey, do you want to?
Hey, man. We're just touched on. I talked to Rob Proof from Pine Tree Engineering about the big brick. Culvert. Because there's like an eight month lead time on getting that box culvert and we haven't, and the warrant won't be approved till June. It's probably gonna be a following. Year project. The project can be done between June and Labor Day. So we're gonna have to make it through another year with that. And we're hopeful that we'll be okay. But if there starts to be problems, we may just have to limit it to one way or just take precautions so that we don't do any more damage to it. The hope is to do the work. In September time period and we'll go to them now and tell them that we're talking about not this summer, but next and to plan for that, that there'll be a week. Or so that they won't be able to use that in September and that they should plan accordingly for reservations. I don't know what time they actually shut that down in the. Fall, but we will impact them. Some extent to campground.
But maybe just after our conversation today, I spoke to Tyler. He thinks we should shut it down to one lane immediately.
Okay.
So I said, let's reevaluate it. Let's go take a look at it with our both of our eyes and come back to you with the recommendation. So we.
Okay.
Greg may come to you and say we should put it to one lane now.
Okay.
Especially when we're gonna have a. Longer process to her replacement. I think they could last as long.
Okay. Yeah, we'll defer to you, but that's the plan right now. Did you have any luck reaching out to the other towns? I did. Yeah, because I would like to have a real cost estimate for the project costs and then I'll. We can come up with whatever we think will be there for them. And then I'll, I'll send them a letter with the breakdown of the construction costs and then so that they're aware. See if they'll buy it.
I think it should be based on. Tax base share.
Formula.
Seriously, did the Army, tell me again about the restrictions from Army Corps of Engineer about when.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Their window is for.
I assume it's Army Corps. It may just be made DEP, but they said that it had to be, I believe it was late June until basically Labor Day or. Late September. So my hope is that. I think it kind of depends on what year you're gonna do it and where the days fall and all that. I'm not sure if it's locked down precisely, but he said it's over the summer and before October, certainly that we would have to do the work. Before October.
Yes.
Labor Day obviously is one of their biggest.
Probably. Yeah, that's why I was kind of hoping that we could get away with, you know, after into September, late September, if that's still acceptable, that would be the goal. And we have two years with the grant awards. It's not an issue with the hundred fifty thousand. We can, we have, we have that for two years. So as long as we did it. This summer, the next one, we'd still be eligible for the money. Forty two.
And the hundred fifty thousand is contingent on us. The voters approving the balance.
Yes.
At.
What board of work?
I just was asked to clarify one thing that. Chip Woodman wasn't hired by the town. He volunteered. His, his services to contain the beavers in, in the towns. That are impacting our roads. So I was just asked to clarify that he wasn't actually hired and getting paid. He's, he's on his phone. So.
The infamous Maycomb Road beavers.
Well.
Yes, and there's a few other. They have a little family tree going, but yes.
Well, yeah.
You just got the biggest one so far in my backyard.
Oh, good. So, yeah, if you go to the folks who live a little farther down. The wetlands in, on the Maycomb Road, you'll find like an annual ritual of paper clearance.
Yes.
No, Chip Woodman stopped at the culvert when we were there, attempting to clear it with the excavator and completely volunteer to serve.
Yes.
I didn't make it clear.
It said hired.
But we kind of hired him.
No, we're not paying them. So, no.
Completely voluntary.
Yes.
He said, can I help? Would you like to? And he said, yes.
Yes.
He said, you have any other areas that are problems? I gave him a list. And. Off he went.
He's been a busy boy. Yes.
Completely voluntary. No, no contract, no hire. Just. Then I'm willing to help you and I have all the licenses, permits. And.
I'll have to clarify.
You don't want to be Carl's step.
I'd like to thank everyone, my colleagues here on the executive branch of the town. For their help in signing off on a letter to Senator Collins in support of. The North Monmouth Water Main Project. The fact that we were able to indicate to Senator Collins that we had made a substantial. Allocation. In previous years to. Funding the feasibility study that we've done. Is super helpful. Her office has been. Looking for proposals for congressionally designated. Funding. And we're, I don't know if we're in the yes pile, but we're, we're in the final running pile. Or something like four hundred thousand dollars to. Fund the balance of. The engineering for that project. So that would sort of keep things moving along. We still have a long way to go in terms of looking for other funding sources. Actually pay for the construction. But it was very. See the seat of the pants and last minute that we all had to. Come together to show up at town hall to sign a letter. So thank you, Joe, and, and the rest of the folks here for. Taking time off from your busy week to swing by and. Sign on a letter. It was, it was good to have a. A whole set of signatures on that. I'm going to the legislature tomorrow for. For a bill that has two titles. The official title is the local recycling bill. But those of you might know, it's actually called the picking at the dump bill. Which is being heard tomorrow afternoon up at the legislature in front of the Judiciary Committee. So Representative Hassanfuss put in a bill. To. Propose exempting towns from any liability if. Someone got injured in the midst of picking at the transfer station and. And that would allow the town to be able, if it decided to, to do that without. Concern from the insurer. The liability concern that someone might get hurt. So. There are a couple of actually folks, anyone in the audience wants to join and testify on that, you're welcome to. But there's some folks who are gonna join me up and against those, some local folks who are gonna say a few words about. About that. And then lastly. Senator Hickman contacted me over the weekend and pointed out that the Department of Agriculture. Has revised again at his request. The best practices for sound cannons used to deter critters. And, and so now they have best practices that describe. How frequently you can use them. It described the decibel level, it describes the time of day, and then makes a strong recommendation to working with neighbors. I have yet to bounce this one off of Pat and the rest of the folks at Norris Hill. But it seems like it's a step in the right direction and at least we have something in writing. That tells people what they should and shouldn't be doing. And I know Pat has been working with the farm up there. Specifically on some technology to implement for. June and July and August when the Honeycrisp are. Tasting pretty sweet to the crows.
You have somebody that's going to enforce it?
Department of Agriculture.
Is it in the bill?
No, no. And in fact, it turned out not to be a bill. This is actually a best practice is something less than a regulation. And it doesn't even require a statute change because it's now a published best practice. And what this does is it forces the Department of Agriculture to. To comply with those standards. So that when they spend.
In a four month delay. So they start in. In June and they'll come and enforce in September.
I can't answer for the Department of Agriculture. We've all got them on speed dial. We can fill their voicemail box again if we need to, but what it does is it gives us at least the framework for. The standard that we can hold them accountable for. We'll see.
The other thing I have is the Conservation Commission has made a request that. And I think just you've. But I don't know if you let them know yet or not, that. They wanted one of those pieces of land that. For foreclosure. Or and. So if we choose, I guess it's gonna be the next meeting or it'll be after the redemption period is up. So.
Okay. Once the letters go out, the current, the former owner will have thirty days to redeem it. According to the policy, and then it will come back to you when we decide to dispose of it. And at that point, you can decide whether you wanna. As town owned conservation land. That's their suggestion. It's the one near the. Wagon.
The wagon.
Yeah, bridge, that little piece that's kind of in the water.
The wetlands down there. Yes. So it has very little economic value. But it probably has some sort of. Habitat value.
Yeah, right.
Hunting and fishing value. Yeah.
Other comment?
Hi, yes. I don't know. Oh, wait. Hold on. Do you see me?
Yo. Yes.
Hi there. So my name is Deborah. And. I was reviewing. The Monmouth Select Board notes and I only had a question. So the question is, when I was reviewing it. I noticed that two hundred thousand dollars. Is to reevaluate the town property. So I'm just curious, how many hours? Is it actually gonna take to warrant two hundred thousand dollars?
It will probably, in all reality, actually cost more than that. This was a. Down payment to put in reserve funds for some time in the future when the, when the board decided to do it. That probably won't quite be enough, would be my guess. These projects for a town our size are somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. Generally speaking.
And Deborah, it's a, it's a situation where. The last time we did an evaluation, we did a statistical evaluation. So there was no. On the ground. House by house visit. By someone who is making sure that every I is dotted and T is crossed in terms of what the valuation of a particular property is. It is probably time for us to do that the next time we do a revaluation. It's been seventeen, eighteen, eighteen years, maybe. It was like two thousand seven.
I think, I think it was.
Yeah.
I think you're correct.
It's been a long time since, since that level of detail has been done. And. And we thought that it was important to make sure that. We. Make, that we ensure that every taxpayer is paying their fair share. By doing a very thorough evaluation rather than just a statistical one.
You also answered my question by telling me when the last one was completed. So thank you.
And the money for that will come from the. Undesignated, I'm not sure of the new term for it, but undesignedated reserve. It won't cost anything. The taxpayers. At this point. Any other? Comment from? Any other comment from? Then, I don't know who had their hand up first, but I don't know.
We're all together. Am I okay here?
You're probably okay.
Okay, um so first just a reminder, my name is Donna Steffi and I am the Chair of the School Board for RSU two. And I'm here with um the other representatives from Monmouth. Was here a couple of months ago when we were talking about, you know, filling a position and I first wanted to say thank you very much. For uh you know, giving us Jim Grandal because he has really saved us this year as we were working on the budget with this big push. To try to look at some issues that we were looking at for this particular year and uh he has been. Very instrumental in helping us get on track, pull things together and get to where we are, and so even though we're running a hair bit. You know, behind, we're doing really well, we did have a meeting last evening with the Select Board members and unfortunately I understand that you all never got the invitation. And so um we're just here to share with you some information that we shared ever so much brief, much more brief. So if you have some information moving forward, if that's okay, um it probably would take a few minutes, but I'm gonna let Jim talk about it as he is. The um Chair of our Budget Committee.
So, yeah, I'm not gonna go through all of the detail, um. Everybody probably there, it's kind of an interesting year because we chose um one of the five counties to leave. So what you see in front of you where we kind of look at a focus form up. Is what the story is around on the budget versus last year. Last year, that number you see there of twenty seven million and change is directionally accurate, there are some things that. We were doing in the RCU that you can't describe a penny or a dollar, you get a penny or a dollar over here for shared services. Um from an accounting perspective, every Richmond job. Every non-shared job, every you know, specific thing that we did for, you know, extracurricular, co-curricular enrichment. Is accounted for um and stripped out of that budget. So that's just the one caveat is, it it's tough to look at a year to year and say these are perfect numbers, last year's numbers are pretty close, but. Again, we shared a lot of resources between Dresden and Richmond, between Richmond and the RSU. Um, a couple of things, one, enrollment continues to decline, uh it's not going down, you know, drastically, but it is going down in the cumulative effect. Uh and Mom at the Academy now, it's a hundred and seventy seats. Um you know, my girls were there, it was two hundred, two hundred and twenty, so those things challenge us because we're getting less subsidy from the state. But we're still trying to provide the same program, and you can guess it's an obvious challenge. Um another impact, which is something that's gonna take us a little while to figure out is, twenty one percent of our central office used to be paid for by Richmond. About two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that Richmond used to pay for things that we still need, still need an HR person. Payroll person, still need special ed, still need superintendent. Um that two hundred and twenty plus thousand dollars that is allocated across the the remaining four towns in the RSU. Um the biggest cost driver, biggest expense driver in this budget, other than embedded expenses, which are. Normal salary increases and staff increases that um that we have for our teachers and staff. Um and labor is eighty plus percent of our school budget, special ed is is the one area that's really impacting us and has been for a while. Um we have students moving where our district that you can't provide programming for and we have to place them, that's, that's a burden that we, that we bear. Um they move here from another town, that town now gets relieved and no longer has to pay it, and we have to pay it. Um the state is also, and as part of their death by a thousand cuts funding strategy, has also um you know, main care is something which every year. We have to fund more of main, what's called main care seat. When it started about five, six years ago, we were funding approximately twenty five thousand dollars a year, next year we'll fund approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year. It's an area that we don't control because we're required to be, you know, the the uh the programming toward these students. But it places a big burden on us. Um, we look at, and I'll kind of walk you through the highlights of where we are, where we're gonna go in the next week, because it's. A lot gonna happen in the next seventy two hours, um state funding continues to be flat. What I mean by that is effectively over the last decade, state is not paying anymore on per student basis than they were. So although energy costs go up, um labor costs are going up, state's kind of holding right in that six thousand, six thousand two hundred range. And all the rest of the cost increases are being shifted to. Um that hasn't changed since when I was on the board before, so if. You think about a twenty five million dollar budget and say we go up four percent a year. But the state is giving us flat funding, what it effectively means is every year we have to go give or to be ten positions that we're gonna try to maintain flat. That's obviously not tenable. Um, another thing which is is gonna be painful this year is we had a number of positions that were grant funded from federal grants, Sustor Grants, et cetera. A lot of this was meant to kind of help our kids get back on track after COVID, you know, there's a lot of social emotional issues, a lot of academic loss. And uh those positions are gone, uh the grant funding is gone, none of those positions are included in our, in our budget right now, so. It was, if we had included them, it was approximately five hundred thousand dollars, we're not including them, so what it means is we just, we have to do more or less. Those, those people aren't there, those resources aren't there anymore. They hit on a couple of high points that I um, we've adjusted capital improvement budget because Richmond's no longer in the RSU. What you have in front of you is is a summary of some of the things that we have already addressed, so we have driven a lot of cost out. Not backfilling positions in central office, not backfilling certain positions across the RSU. Um we have a lot of concerns across security in our school, um so we have shifted. Our, our plan next year was to suspend all of our capital improvement budget, saving Richmond, which we're not going to do, thankfully, there still have a problem with it forever. Or we're far in the line, but we shifted the majority of our capital improvement budget to upgrade all of our security cameras, those are public systems, the police responders. Get access to it, be able to see what's going on, obviously what happened to Tennessee makes it even more urgent. Um, so we are trying to shift stuff around where we can, um so that's not incremental. Where, where we are right now, um you can kind of see in the summary and then some of the detail behind it, right now, this is an expense budget. Beyond the expense budget, based on the state's funding and other sources of revenue, we're looking at right now at about a one point one million dollar increase for the towns of the RSU. At, based on the current version of the budget, we have meetings over the next two days, where we're gonna look at how we can, we can minimize that. Um but, but there's no fat because, so what we're gonna be having conversations on is reducing programs. Consolidating positions, do we have, you know, one teacher now take two grades at Dresden, do we have, you know, I'm just saying, no hypothetical. But those are the real things that we're looking at, so although our expense budget has gone up by less than four percent. The budget as it stands right now would represent about a seven and a half percent increase in funding by town, which. You know, we understand the economic factors that we're dealing with, but you know, across the state, across the country. Um, so more than happy to go provide additional detail. Um, tomorrow night's a board meeting, um Friday night, believe it or not, we have a a budget committee meeting. And at that budget committee meeting, we're gonna be going through position by position to determine if there's additional activity. So, trying to balance the fact that we don't want to burden taxpayers with, you know, additional costs because the state produces step up. But at the same time, uh we have needs of our, of our students, and so we're gonna try to find, you know, that balancing thing. So that's a hundred thousand foot view, any questions?
I would like to invite anybody that would like to join us, starting Friday night at seven PM Eastern Weekend, come on down to the RSU central office and join us.
I'll be there on spirit.
It's gonna be a long night, I think.
Would, uh is it been any consideration into classroom signs, I understand some classes like. There's only six students in class. That's, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Even if there was twelve, I think.
Kind of goes back to my, you know, we went from two hundred and twenty to a hundred and seventy, we have, we have to find a way, but is it, is it? Isn't, if you're in a programming, you know, does that class go away or do you find a way to merge it and still walk it out? Um I mean, one of the ancillary benefits.
No, I was just gonna speak to, sometimes that's not around the position and it's around the courses being offered, so it'd be. Wouldn't change a position, it would just be shifting classes, but yeah, let's be considered.
Uh so you said the average right now as it stands is seven point five percent for all three towns. Is it safe to, oh, four town, is it safe to assume that Monmouth is going to be above average?
No, Monmouth is actually um, well, it's percentage. Uh so we're, we're now with, with Richmond leaving, we're forty percent of the RSU. Um Dresden is actually gonna see the highest percentage increase, um but this is all based upon our, obviously our, our cost sharing formula that we have, which combines tax bases, students. Uh as of right now, with no changes, and I do anticipate there will be changes, it would be four hundred and forty five thousand dollar increase to to Monmouth. And if you talk to the legislature, um, um Jim Grandal says, uh the formula's been broken for over a decade. Um so at some point you gotta address it, it's, it really does, it's not, it's. It's a cost shift model, it's not a true education funding model. Inadequately funds and everything and any. Yeah, hurts kids, hurts actually.
Is there a, is there a clause in the RSU agreement if the town pulls out that, because they put it to the other four towns in the majority? Would you do that, is there any sort of penalty or, I'm not sure how these things craft. Um it really does kind of.
There's a penalty, we believe, but we now have to figure out how to do central office on our own and manage a lot, so there are, there were efficiencies of. Instead of one person wearing three hats, we had subject matter experts, our, our facilities person could do something. That our part-time facilities person couldn't do before, that we've now then had to go hire our contractors for. Definitely some benefits of, um and we thought about sharing programming with technology now. Maybe I have six kids in a Monmouth Academy class, I have nine kids in a Hauldale High School class, well. We share that resources to offer, some of those things, um, but like Richmond, there's nothing that keeps us from leaving, I just. There's really no financial benefit at all, if anything, it creates a little bit of financial risk, because now you gotta. Turn this back and go to the contents office and hire a bunch of people in here.
I encourage you to read the news and how Richmond is faring, before the budgets even started, they've now asked for the same thousand dollars. And I'm gonna be, you need more in your budget trying to figure it out, because they realize like this costs much more than we.
Is the state funding for Richmond just been shifted over?
Yeah, yeah, so there was the only little wrinkle that we had, which I think just got resolved a couple of days ago, was um. For some reason, the state was then decided to give Richmond a a pro-rata amount of the debt for the new MMS school. Even though our separation agreement said all the, all RSU debt stays with the RSU. Um so they were breaking, it, it, it has no impact on the taxpayers because all of that debt's past their debt, it was a hundred percent state funded. But it just, it was, it was wonky, that you know, you'd have a separate district which has, you know, twenty one percent of our debt and it changed, so. They finally realized that the right thing to do was keep all the debt with the RSU and um and so. We looked at our, our revenue numbers, looked like they're bouncing a little bit because we had it in there, and then we had to take it out, and then we have it back in there, but it doesn't impact. The, the cost of taxpayers, because whatever we spend for debt on that school, we get back from the state. The board had just first put a timing perspective, uh we have our meetings on Friday, uh we'll be making a recommendation to the board, and the board will be voting on that on uh thirteenth. And so on the thirteenth, we will have, here, here's our number that we're going to the voters with, and we'll communicate that to, to you guys as well.
You know, the, the funding that just the, the state found forty two million dollars or something that was dispersed for education, what was, what was the RSU two share of that?
About hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
But that didn't help us, so you know, we, we went from like thirteen percent to seven.
Yes, yes.
I mean, we, suddenly we were like, oh, feeling much better, because we were really looking at cutting a significant amount of. You know, physicians and other things, you know, we were sending the administration to act really, it's hard, 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 probably. We were cutting physicians and it felt a little better because we had given the baseline of this is where we need to be and. Try to do your best to do it, and it was a little bit relieving for me here, and also for insurance, you know, there's one of those open factors that. We've put in um, you know, an estimate of eight percent and we, you know, as of yesterday hadn't heard back. About what that is, it typically comes out of that this time, I understand that it's, you know, I mean, it's been something that came in today, but it's coming out. There is that piece in there too, so part of that budget, we know, we budgeted for eight percent of a high, we also know that. The insurance companies said that they were gonna cap it at six in the last week, so we know that it's not gonna be any higher than six percent. So that was good news to us, and we were feeling really, been like seven days.
It scared me that an input error caused forty two million dollars to be appropriated, it surprised me.
Yeah, how are you surprised by that?
Hope they don't change your mind.
Does any of the three hundred and sixty thousand go to Richmond?
No, that's just what came to the RSU, I'm sure they had an allocation as well, but that's just what came out. Well, we could provide nothing next week after we get everything finalized, so. Yeah, I, I don't see any scenario in which there's zero impact on the taxpayers' questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next is to consider the twenty twenty three town warrants.
Thank you, guys. And Jim, thanks for, thanks for volunteering.
Thanks for volunteering, doing it on the road.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, you mean, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna backtrack for a second, because I forgot, because I hadn't written it down. Um during select board reports that tomorrow is Harry Cochran's birthday and have a look at what Dennis has put up. He's got a life-size or larger than life-size banner of uh photo of Harry up there. And they're having a birthday celebration tomorrow, bringing the kids, I think K is six, down to Comston Hall to start. And sowing their love of everything Comston Hall and Harry Cochran, so that's tomorrow and Dennis and. Um the friends of the library are providing food and cake and all of that and. Um the friends of the hall, Ian Fairchild is doing the little teaching portion, so. They're gonna have all the kiddos down there tomorrow, so for those of us that grew up going to Comston and dancing on the stage and performing. We all fell in love with it then, and so the kids now are gonna start doing it with the next generation, so. I just wanted to remind everybody that our hometown hero birthday is tomorrow, so. She's dressing up as a nineteen hundred school teacher, yep.
Like dance.
Like when we used to go to New Orleans, yes, yes, yeah, so, sorry, now we can go forward.
I mean, out of the war.
Yeah.
What do we need to do, anything?
Your documents, so you can go through them article by article if you wish. Look them over if you have. However you wanna do it, in, in the end, I just need you to sign, so, sign one of them, I gave you three versions. Most of the alternate versions have to do with the solar question, the rest of them are all the same, just article twenty, right? Yeah, is that what it is, yep.
We've done in the past, we made them.
Yeah.
I think that's what we did, we factored one by one.
Maybe what we could do, it seems to me like, uh, we're gonna agree on about ninety-nine percent of everything here, except for Article twenty. Uh, so if we can go through all the, ones that are not going to be dramatic, and then we can end up with Article twenty and figure out.
Thought after last year, we would have a string, no?
Uh, yes, after I figured out. Yeah, and there was one of them that confused me at first, because, um, this number, is this plus this, but not this, so that's the only thing that got me kind of,
Which one is that?
Confused in there, uh, fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that, that one's a little confusing, because,
Confusing.
Because the sixty thousand is what's left in the Packer Gilman bond proceeds, which we can only use for relevant related issues, so, I'm taking what's left in the bond proceeds to pay, a portion of that debt service in there, so the, it's those two added up minus sixty, should be. Because the sixty's not coming from taxation.
Okay, so that's kind of got confusing, so I don't know. If it, if there's a way that it shows. Because did it confuse you too? I did the math, and I'm like, wait a minute, how am I getting this number? I finally figured out how I got the note, how the number was there.
Same way it was worded last year, but we, but we, I mean, it could, could be changed, just, that's the same question as last year, so last year it was like fifty-six thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you, do you want to go?
That's how we want to go. Article one to choose by written ballot, moderator decided the meeting, that's validity. Article two, to elect all town officers required by law and previous vote, the town to be chosen by super ballot, namely two select board members, two directors of RSU two board, one Cumston Hall trustee, two Cumston Library trustees, and three sanitary district trustees. There's three sanitary district trustees, because they've fallen out of order. They don't, they're not staggered anymore, so we're trying, there's a lot of vacancies, so we're trying to fix that, we're gonna stagger them, so they're all going to be different terms, it'll be like two, two years. Uh, one, two years. Show the town vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to fund the senior citizen property tax assistant program, which provides refunds up to five hundred dollars to those who are sixty-five years of age, and has that, have been a resident, of the town for ten years, we, uh, we never use that, that ten thousand dollars, but it's there in case that many people apply. Of the town raise and appropriate one million two hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred fourteen dollars from the gen, from general taxation for general administration, do you want me to read all those numbers? So that's for general admin. Shall the town appropriate two hundred dollars from the Cumston prize fund and raise and appropriate from general taxation, the sum of, fifty-four thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. A total of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the below-listed community services, that lists out all the, different ones, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything new when you have from previous years. People. Article six, shall the town authorize the additional donation of municipal employee time and materials for the care of the North Monmouth Beach, during the summer swimming season, including lawn mowing, trash removal, sanitary facilities, and the payment of half of the property's liability insurance. This is something we've been doing for a long time, and I, I brought it to you, that it's, it needs to really be authorized on an annual basis from the, voters to, to do that, it's not town property. Shall the town raise and appropriate from general taxation five thousand dollars for the capital improvement program for the following accounts. Monmouth dam assessments, that's just for the other, the non, that's, it's the one, we used all the ten thousand from last year just to deal with, uh, the Cockton Warden issue, so we're, I'm just putting half of it back so we can,
So if we have other dam issues, this we covered?
Yes, really just have an inspection on the, on the other. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred and six dollars from general taxation for law enforcement, police protection? That includes animal control. Shall the town raise and appropriate one hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred and forty from general taxation for fire protection? And, shall the town raise and appropriate two hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars to general taxation, for public safety services, this is ambulance dispatch, fire hydrants, and streetlights. Shall the town raise and appropriate one hundred nine thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars from general taxation for Cumston Hall operating expenses?
Um, could, can we back up to Article ten for just a second?
Sure.
Because you included streetlights in that list.
Yep.
What streetlight expense do we have?
It's the, uh, i- it's the little bit that's remainder for some of the, poles that we, well, first, there's some electric, there's some electricity cost, because the LEDs made it very inexpensive, but there's some, there's some still electricity. And then when we bought them, there are certain, um, facilities or poles that were added by, at the town's request, that CMP would not have installed, so we have to pay a lease fee on them, some of them are guide wire poles and, um.
Roughly speaking, we're talking like,
Twenty-five hundred dollars, it's twenty thousand total, yeah, it's all amount now, yeah. Article eleven, shall the town raise and appropriate a hundred, uh, I already said that. Article twelve, shall the town raise and appropriate ninety-three thousand one hundred fifteen from the, from general taxation for the Cumston Public Library. Shall the town raise and appropriate one hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and forty-seven from general taxation for parks and recreation programs? Article fourteen, shall the town raise and appropriate one million one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars from general taxation for public works accounts? That's the transfer station and general public work. And includes what is finally known as, other public works now, which is the hundred dollars, the parking lot rent, the mill foil inspections, and the Woodbury pond, dam maintenance, we always put, near a street, been five hundred dollars in there for anything that they need down over there, honestly, yeah. Shall the town raise and appropriate, four hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and sixty from general taxation and sixty thousand from excess, bond proceeds and the Packer Gilman Road Bond for debt retirement and debt service. Article sixteen, to see if the town will authorize a select board upon a majority vote of the select board to exceed by no more than ten percent annually, the amount authorized for each account approved in Article four through Article fourteen above, so long as the overall amount spent. But some of those articles does not exceed the total appropriation approved, so basically allows if one, if one, one of those, articles, so say, say public works went over by three or four thousand, you could, in theory, take it from Cumston Hall, vice versa, things like that, in case one, it, it just gives you a little flexibility. But it can't be. But it can't exceed that total, so you're just kind of moving, the money around between accounts, if, if, if so needed. Um, Article seventeen, shall the town create a, a fire department equipment reserve for the, purpose of purchasing and repairing fire department equipment and appropriate, twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars from the undesignated fund balance and an additional four thousand eight hundred seventy-five from general taxation for the same, this is to create, an actual reserve, what's been happening is, there's been this four thousand that's kind of falling into the, undesignated fund balance for the generator, I'm just creating a formal reserve account that could be used in the, in the future, but for now, it's really for that generator, reserve account, and I'm taking the money that had fallen into the, undesignated reserve that had been raised, and we're just re-appropriating it to that purpose, which it was raised for.
So it doesn't have to be carried over in a manual process?
Yes, exactly, gotcha. Um, shall the town create a revaluation reserve fund for the purpose of completing a property tax revaluation sometime in the future, and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the same? Article nineteen, shall the town vote to authorize the issuance of up to three hundred ninety-eight thousand in general obligation bonds or notes of the town, for the purpose of financing the repair of the Cockton Wagon Dam, reimbursing the town of Litchfield for a portion of the Woodbury Dan, Woodbury Pond Dam repair, and a replacement of the Beaver Brook Callwork. Details of such borrowing, including provisions that the bonds may be taxable or tax exempt prepaid or subject, to call for redemption with or without premium, and the dates, maturities, nomination and interest rates to be determined by the select board and appropriate from general taxation, ten thousand dollars for the first annual payment.
Justin, when we got the estimate, for the interest rate on this ten-year bond, um, who, who is financing that?
This right here is, uh, the bond bank.
And do they, uh, on this particular note, are they front-loading the payment like they do with their other?
Yes, I, I have an example of it here, if you want to see it, it's, it's the same kind of structure where it's a little higher in the beginning and then trails off.
And trails off?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, for future reference, then, uh, I'm looking at the annual, is there an annual payment here? See the total amount?
I could show you, this one, because I don't anticipate having to borrow, the money upfront, because for one, the Beaver Brook isn't going to be, we're not even going to start it till next year.
Yep.
And the amount for the Litchfield Dam, I can wait until basically the last minute, because they've already paid it, so as long as I give it to them and, good faith, and the Cockton Wagon Dam repair is really all that I, I have to do, so my intent was to, wait as long as I could on this, so I own, that ten thousand dollars is, is an interest-only payment, from the beginning, because I, I know how this project's going to work, and I don't need to borrow the.
And it's kind of like the, the rump year of the first, first, first rump year of payments?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, and I'll skip twentieth. Shall the town approve amendments, to sections of the Comprehensive Site Development Ordinance two thousand nine that regulate commercial solar development projects in areas including, sitting requirements, lock coverage, setbacks, dual-use, but agriculture activity and visual screening buffers.
And so this is a, um, essentially, we're accepting the recommendations from, the, uh, committee we appointed, details of which folks can take a look at, but it's just, uh, some tweaks,
Yes.
to improve the solar development, so that things that we've had to, sort of wrestle and negotiate over in the past are now actually part of the ordinance and, are, are known upfront.
Right, more straightforward for the developers, okay. Article twenty-two, shall the town authorize an amendment to the Monmouth Tax and Compliment Financing District that will allow taxes collected from the district to be spent on recreational trails, and to eliminate the funding associated with the business. Article twenty-three, shall the town appropriate monies from Snowville registration fees reimbursed to the town by the treasurer of State Domain, for the purpose of grooming and maintaining Snowville Trails solely within the municipal limits, it's town and Monmouth. Which of these now are housekeeping, but Article twenty-four, shall the town authorize select board to receive taxes from tax club members, after the payment due date without interest? Article twenty-five, shall the town authorize a select board to appropriate an estimated amount of seven hundred twenty-five thousand from municipal revenue sharing, and one million three hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five, of fiscal year twenty-four non-property tax revenue, which includes two hundred thousand of unassigned fund balance to reduce the tax commitment. Article twenty-six, shall the town vote to require one half of the taxes for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year due in April on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and one half of the taxes for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year due on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and to see if the town will vote to require the rate per annum of interest set by the treasurer of State Domain, eight percent be charged on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four on all unpaid taxes. In addition, shall the select board be authorized to postpone the due date of taxes and waive interest when the governor declares a state of emergency? That sentence is kind of a holdover from COVID, but, I don't, I don't know, it could happen again, something. The Article twenty-seven, shall the town authorize a select board to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon, on such terms as the select board deems advisable and execute a quitclaim deed for such property. Said sales shall be conducted by sealed bid after public notice, including the community advertiser, except for repurchase by original owner or taxpayer of said property. Except that the select board shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRSA Section nine forty-three C for qualifying homestead property, if it chooses to sell it to anyone other than the former owners.
Uh, I would like to say something on that, the word quitclaim. Um, quitclaim, is one word. The C is not capitalized. And I don't think deed should be capitalized either. Um, that would be consistent, if we make that change, that would be consistent with how the main revised statutes, uh, designate what a municipal quitclaim deed is, how it's spelled.
Okay.
Fix that in two ways. I can, I can fix it if you all say it's okay after you've signed this, because it is just a spelling change. Or if you're uncomfortable with that, you can all come in tomorrow morning and sign it after. So it's up to you how, how you want to, how you want to handle that. Article twenty-eight, shall the town authorize a select board to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved municipal budget, proposed budget in whole or part fails to pass until a proposed municipal budget in whole or in part is approved.
This is kind of a continuing resolution. Basically says, until we figure out the budget process, we can continue with the status quo.
Yes. Now, the town vote to authorize a select board to accept and expend or utilize for its intended purpose on behalf of the town, any grants or funds awarded or paid to the town, by any state or federal agency grant or other monetary donation from any other public or private entity, organization, or individual, any,
Gift.
of personal property, this includes the authority to apply to such grants, funds, or donations where an application is required or take any other action thereon. Article thirty, shall the town vote to authorize the select board to dispose of surplus equipment and property through sale or donation of said items? Article thirty-one, shall the town vote to appropriate tax improvement financing revenues to the Development Program Fund for the Tax Improvement Financing District, and authorize the select board to spend funds from the Development Program Fund, to be used for purposes based on the district's development program and statutory requirements.
So, Justin?
Yes.
Um, version number two, Article thirty-one is missing.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I, uh, correct me, I'm, I'm, I'm wrong. On version number two, Article, it's just misnumbered.
It's misnumbered.
Okay, it's misnumbered as Article thirty-two, and there is no Article thirty-one.
What would you like, I put the, there's something in front of you, the first page is, Andrew Scoggan Bank, I gave you all three versions of the, of financing, so that you can make, um, educated, uh, so Andrew Scoggan Bank informed me that they will not bond this project, uh, for twenty years. So, um, they're our typical lending bank, for whatever reason. It doesn't mean you couldn't go with somebody else, but I want you to be aware, if you look at the payment schedule, Andrew Scoggan Bank, it's very even, right, their payments, are the same every year throughout the, the term of the loan, that's typical of how they've done our other loans too. The bond bank doesn't do that, they kind of make them a little heavier in the beginning, and they drop, a little bit every year until the, the end of the term. So if you look at the way, it works, you could probably make a pretty good estimation based on Andrew Scoggan at ten years. And if you made it twenty, it would probably be, you know, close to half, maybe a little more than half, because the interest rate might be slightly higher. But it might give you a better idea of what that, loan term would look like if it was borrowed through a, through a normal bank instead of the bond bank, so I just wanted you to kind of have all three, versions in front of you, you'll notice that one of the bond bank versions is for five hundred and ninety-six, thousand, that's the idea behind that particular one, is that the, um, the dismantling cost would be included, in the initial borrow, so that in theory, the town would put that aside into a reserve, fund, so that it would be there to kind of answer that question about whether, the town would be on the hook for anything at the end, is that fair?
Well, let me, let me, I mean, Justin very kindly produced a couple of versions here, one, one version of Article twenty, is the one, is, includes some language that I proposed, because, um, uh, rightfully so, Chris and Mark had asked some hard questions, and, I wanted to assure them that, uh, those questions were certainly welcome, and that we have some answers for those questions. Um, some questions about whether we penetrate the gap, some questions about whether we provide for a visual barrier, uh, that's, uh, consistent with what the town is now going to be requiring of any solar developer in town. And then some questions about how do we retire the system at the end of life? And, um, and all of those questions, I thought, were important enough to put into the article, so that, um, that folks can see for themselves that, uh, there's a plan, uh, that there's no uncertainty, that we wouldn't follow through on these things. And then I even threw in an additional, uh, And then I even threw in an additional uh, uh, section to that article, which is a requirement that future select boards um, must use the, uh, any federal grants that are received by the town to pay off the bond early. So if you look at Article 20, it reads as follows, it says, shall the town vote to authorize the issuance of 596,000 rather than 566? And the additional 30,000 is for decommissioning and visual barrier costs. In general obligation bonds or notes, the town, for the purpose of financing the construction of a town-owned solar array project at the transfer station, and then I inserted this phrase, that does not disturb the existing buried protective cap, creates a visual barrier and reserves decommissioning costs in advance. So the additional uh, 20, 25,000 dollars for decommissioning is set aside in a reserve account. So we all know it's there, um, we'll just have to pay interest on it. Uh, the details of such borrowing, including provisions, the bond may be taxed or become taxed and prepaid or subject to call for redemption with or without premium and the dates, maturities, denominations and interest rates should be determined by the select board and appropriated from the general taxation. And the uh, the figure that Justin has put in here is 58,722009. Um, that sounds very high to me, I said that to Justin as soon as he told me what it was. And uh, and it's because the, the way that um, the main bond bank uh, formulates its payments is they do high numbers first and then you end your payments with very low numbers. So I had uh, Justin print out the payment schedule, the final payment on that particular bond would be $30,000. So we started 58 and by year 20, we're down to $30,000. Um, but nonetheless, we want to put the high one in if this is the way we go. I suspect we might be able to convince a lender to go with something that is a level payment. And if it were a level payment, if the bond bank were to do a level payment, you just connect the dots between 30,000 and 58 and you come up with something roughly around 42, 43,000 dollars. So an average payment of about 43,000 dollars a year. Set that aside for a second. Let me finish this proposed language. Um, for the first annual payment, the 58,000 would be for the first annual payment. This bond will qualify the town, and here's language that I inserted so that um, there's no choice for future select boards about what happens when a large check comes in from the federal government. This bond will qualify the town for a 30% to 40% federal matching credit directed specifically at this project. All federal grants, when received, must be used to pay any remaining principal of this bond in advance. And so what that says is, um, if it's a 30% match, then uh, 30% of 566,000 dollars, which turns, you could do the math real quick, I don't know the number off the top of my head, 30, 30% of 566. Uh, that would uh, be used to prepay the bond, it wouldn't be a 20-year bond, it would be a 13-year bond.
About 170.
How much?
About 170.
170,000 dollars uh, would be used to pay the principal in advance. Um, if it were 40%, then it would be a figure north of that and it would just mean the bond would get paid off a year earlier or something like that. Uh, you can see the, the, the rest of the details of uh, the proposed language and the new figure. And I would suggest that if we decide to move forward as a board uh, with this proposed Article 20, which would be my recommendation, that we ask the town manager to go back to our current bank. I'm not, I don't, I don't know exactly why we didn't think of this beforehand, but if we're doing banking with Bangor Savings. I mean, uh, it's important for everyone to understand that Andrew Scoggan Bank did offer, give us a proposal if we decided to move all of our deposits to Andrew Scoggan Bank. And that, that, they would have given us a proposal that would have been level funded for something in the order of $43,000 a year. Um, uh, it's a huge administrative nightmare to move all of our deposits from one bank to another. Um, what we didn't do is talk to Bangor Savings where all of our deposits currently are and see if they would be interested in financing over a 20-year period uh, a similar uh, proposal. My, my guess is that uh, you know, all of these lenders, whether it's the bond bank, Andrew Scoggan Bank or Bangor Savings, they're competitors and they're all going to come about the same amount in terms of an interest rate, in terms of uh, uh, payment terms. Because they all kind of know where each other stands and that's kind of how they price it.
Um, can, they just real quick.
Sure.
If you go with a bond bank and you use the, and you do get federal funds, you're not going to be able to pay it off.
That's right.
That's correct, that's, that's correct.
Uh, that's, that would be out of the, you can't say bond bank because that would kind of not be the direction.
What, what you could do is continue to make the payments from the proceeds of the federal grants that would then just pay it off and you'd um, end up having to pay interest for those years with the bond.
That's a good structure down there.
Correct. So, so if we go with the bond.
Out there, yes, that federal government has a way of putting all kinds of caveats and stuff and really, look at the playground.
Oh, yeah.
A classic example of, we're going to go this way. So I, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in that.
Yes, well, we, I had brought that up before, if we went with the bond bank, we couldn't take whatever money that the government's going to give back to us, that was our money to begin with, you know, to, to pay it off.
So what we could do is when the federal, and this would certainly be consistent with this article, is that we could reserve the federal government and use the monies to make the payment that uh, that would be required by the bond bank.
If federal government gives you that, those funds, that grant, or whatever you want to call it, you have that flexibility from them, there's no way to guarantee that, so I think you're going to end up with a, you know, regular bank or bond bank, but just thought.
So uh, Justin, I, I have a question for you and I think it's, it's one that is important for us all to understand. Um, what is our budgeted electrical expenses for 2024?
I think it's about 41,000 is in the, this budget that's before you, what we, what we, what we paid in the previous completed budget was about 29,000.
Right, so it's up to 41 at this point for the, for the future budget.
Yes.
And so uh, if we were to add in the uh, the academy building electrical system, what would be a fair um, estimate of how much it's going to cost the town on an annual basis?
I guess it depends how much it's used, but if I were to, if I were to compare it to this building, we're, I think our, I think our budget for this building is like 35 or 30, I could look real quick, it's right in front of you. Uh, no, it's not, I don't have the detail there, but I think that's about what it is for this building. I don't, I wouldn't say it's much bigger than this, I don't know.
So roughly speaking, if we were to combine that with what we budgeted for next year, that we're in the neighborhood of 45, 44, 45,000 dollars. And roughly speaking, that is exactly what the average payment would be for the bond bank. Or if we find another lender that's willing to uh, give us an even payment, it would be almost exactly what that would be. Uh, and so in the end, what we've created is a process where we pay a financer for a certain period of time, perhaps 12 or 13 years.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we are paying the bank what we would otherwise be paying CMP for 12 or 13 years. And after that, for the warranted life of the panels, we would be receiving free electricity. And after the warranty is over, then it would be for whatever is left in the system in terms of its ability to produce after 20 years. Uh, the other advantage to this is that for that 12 or 13-year duration that we're paying the bank instead of CMP, we're not paying increases in electricity costs. So we've inflation-proofed our energy costs, at least electricity costs for that period of time. Because we'd be producing electricity at the transfer station rather than having to buy it on the market and taking the market price.
A quick question, but see, man, if that's possible. Um, in your long-range capital planning, um, it can account for retired debt service and any other thing that may happen. Bonding yourself to debt with us in a priority that if, and you need a fire truck, you need a new dump truck, that, that structure is going to throw us out of line because we're taking this on, it's not necessarily, not saying it's a totally bad idea. I'm saying, does that throw us off that when we really need something, oh, we're stuck with this for, this payment for the next 20 years? So it really takes away from capital projects we really, I see this as, you know, there's some value to it, but in the long term, is it going to, is it going to really kind of throw us off if we actually really need something, stuff that the town's really responsible for? Not just this pseudo-green, we're going to save planet by doing this. I don't think that the town is in a position where it's going to uh, look like it can't afford its debts because uh, uh, the, the town kind of on paper is a wealthy, you know, it has a lot of land value here compared to its size. We have pretty uh, stable cash flow um, in this community. We, we don't have a lot of people that don't pay their taxes, so that's all, that's all a good thing. But, but your question is kind of difficult to answer because some bigger municipalities, they actually go and have themselves raided by a bond agency. And smaller communities don't usually do that. Um, so it's hard to tell what that might have for an impact on, on an interest rate or anything like that. Well, that's kind of what I was talking about, long-range capital.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you, you get retired debt service and okay, well, now it's time to, to take another, you know, pick up, get in a new dump truck, a new plow.
New fires.
New, new cruisers, is, is that going to be a? We have some relatively um, small items, I would say, like uh, uh, smaller dump trucks and um, the, the breathing equipment for the fire department. Some of that stuff is going to fall off over the next couple of years, the cruisers are on a kind of a three-year lease purchase agreement. The long-term ones, which are new around here is the, is the Packard-Gilman debt, which is, which is a hundred something thousand dollar payment in the, and the old middle school building is another hundred and something thousand dollar payment. And those are two items that I would say aren't, aren't, haven't historically been payments that this town has, has had to carry. So I'm not sure if that, I'm not trying to be coy, it's just it's a hard question for me to, for me to answer that. Looking forward to.
Yeah.
So what is for stuff that we really need, are we throwing ourselves off?
So Mike, to give you some perspective, if you look at Article 15, you'll see that um, the accumulated debt service for the town uh, is 104,000 dollars in interest and 437,000 dollars in debt retirement. So each year, the town is, at, at its current debt level, is paying off 437,000 dollars a year. So uh, you uh, contemplate uh, taking on a 596,000 dollar uh, a bond for something that is clearly not a necessity, but maybe an advantage. Um, uh, would essentially mean one year's worth of, well, one and, one year and change of debt retirement for the town. We would be back at the same place we are now in terms of our total debt in about a year and a half in terms of retiring debt.
I have a spreadsheet here, if you're interested in kind of looking, just while you're sitting here, this is the, this is kind of a capital plan, if it's something that you're interested in looking at. That was. Yeah. Justin, do you think we, we've overestimated on our um, 41,000 dollars that we budgeted for electrical expenses for the next year? Do you think we're going to, based on what's been happening, are we going to get quotes for that or? I'm really not sure because we kind of added a lot based on, based on kind of the requests that, that, I'm not sure if it was approved, maybe you know. I'm not sure if the PUC approved those requests, but I think it was like a 15% increase um, to the PUC rate. So we kind of tack that on to all of those, all of those budget lines. Um, that's where that came from. Yes.
I have a quick question, I, I'm not 100% sure how this works, but I'll ask it. Uh, right now, we pay or going to pay 41,000 dollars a year to CMP. When we put solar in at the transfer station, that total 41,000 goes away except for the 2,500 we have to pay for street lighting. Does that go away or do we still have to pay delivery charge from, from the solar panels, still have to go somewhere? Three quarters of our bill is delivery charge. Not so much the mechanics of, of producing the power. We're producing the power in the most efficient way, they still have to deliver it. Do we still have delivery charge at CMP?
We do, but I'm not sure how that worked, I think that there's a, I, I'm not an expert on this, but my understanding is there's a, there's a base, there's like a base rate on every house for just being uh, connected, whether you're.
It's a meter charge.
Yeah, right, I don't think it's very much. One is 13, 13 dollars.
13 dollars a meter.
Yep. And, and then the delivery charge is a, is some uh, factor of how much electricity you use, the way that I think that it works. So because we're, we'd be using it off the solar, most of that would go away, is the way I think that the formula, you know, it's like, it's, if you're taking the standard offer, I believe right now, it's like nine cents a kilowatt is, goes to CMP and the rest of it goes to your, whoever the supplier is, so like, we use a company called Constellation Energy is who, who our supplier is right now. And they get the supply and then however much we pay them, it's some factor of that goes to CMP for the, for the delivery. But I believe if we're not paying a supplier, then we're just paying that base fee on the meters. Yeah, is the way I think it works, but I'm, I'm not an expert at that.
So Dave, we've done this calculation with two different uh, vendors. Um, one was on the different proposals, uh, revision, who wanted, who was a company that wanted to lease uh, the town land to put their own panels on and then give us 15% off of our electric bill. That was last year's proposal. Another proposal was to outsource the solar panels completely to a firm that's got a farm at uh, where's it, Bucks?
Bucksport Paper Mill.
Bucksport Paper Mill. Um, they offered us a, an incentive that was uh, 20% off of our standard offer from 2020. Uh, and when you did the math on that, it essentially meant that uh, we would get a 20-year commitment from them for uh, 5,600 dollars a year um, uh, toward our electric bill, toward our 40,000 dollar electric bill. Uh, but no inflation rider, so if electricity prices go up, we still get 5,600. Um, over the.
I'm just worried about the delivery charge, the delivery charge is more than three quarters of my bill.
So the third, the third option, and this is the one where we've uh, that's triggered this, this proposed warrant article. The third option is uh, where we hire a contractor to build panels on town land that the town owns and we get to enjoy all of the benefit of the electricity rather than just a percent off of what the standard offer is. Um, the third offer, based on the electricity produced there, would, over the course of a 20-year period, uh, result in what is approximately 486,000 dollars of benefit for the town. Um, that's over the 20-year warranty period and of course, there may be some economic life, those panels beyond 20 years. But safe to say that the warranty period is what we're looking at. And that's what makes it, that, that's actually represents a, a, a five-fold improvement over the 108,000 dollar offer that came from the Bucksport folks who were going to give us 5,600 dollars a year for 20 years.
Okay, so when I request under Freedom of Information, I can get an electric, if this all goes through, I can see a CMP bill of 17 dollars and 40 cents.
I don't think that's what it would be for, for this, this one, I'm not sure. I, for residential, it's 13, 22, 95, whatever.
Uh, well.
I'm not sure for.
And if it's 5,000 dollars, where are we?
According, according to.
10,000 dollars, where are we?
Well, the proposal that the, the, that we asked for when, when, when Chris asked to know how much is this going to cost, right? Can we get an idea? The proposal has very specific analysis.
I'd like to see that proposal from CMP first. I like to see it from the president of CMP telling me that it's not going to be 10,000 dollars a month by using this solar panels. Because I know what CMP does to all of us. And all we do is bend over backwards and pay it.
Okay, well, uh, I don't know that we can get it from CMP, but. Okay, well, uh, I don't know that we can get it from C M P, but we can get a a commitment in writing. We have a commitment in writing from a company that's done. Let me, let me finish. From a company that's done these installations, they've done them uh in Maine, they're a reputable company. And they've given us a very logical representation of exactly what uh what we should be expecting as a. Corporate size, we're not a solar farm, it's actually considered under our own regulations, a small scale solar installation. But it will offset, it's designed to offset a forty five thousand dollar electric bill. Uh, so that the town pays a meter charge and that's pretty much it.
Now, the the power has to go over their wires and poles.
Well, this is part of the, this is part of the, the uh. Net metering process and the incentive that uh the federal government is willing to to grant us. So no, um, it completely offsets both transmission and uh distribution. As well as generation costs. So we get the, we get the, the electricity that's produced there is, is, we get a hundred percent credit for it.
Again, getting the power from there to here, going over their wires and poles. They're gonna charge you something for that.
No, not according to state law, they're not.
Because we're a municipality.
Uh, it's the same type of idea that's a net metering residential that Mike takes advantage of at his house. Where you get full credit for all of the electricity that's produced at that location.
There, there's other hunks of that that you're you're missing because it's also on a rolling year. So I lose a lot of power every year. So what happens is after a certain point, if I don't use it, they start taking it back and they call it a rolling, a rolling year. So unfortunately, they're taking it back when I need it most because I have a full electric house. So these are things that I don't know if a larger scale, cause I'm looking at this. The microeconomics of just mine, not a macro for a bigger system like, like Ken is talking about. So I lose that power now. What they, what C M P says, it just, just goes under grid, just turns into ions and anions and cat ions and nobody knows anything. But the truth is, they're selling. So I, I make the capital investment. They say I haven't used it fast enough and then they sell it to my neighbors. So I, you know, so I'm out. So I actually proposed legislation with uh Senator Hinckley. So that would, you know, I don't even know what the results of that, I was sidetracked with other things. Um, so that's, that's number one issue that you should really consider. Um, cause. Losing that power, I don't know how much you could possibly, you know, you could be, I I'm losing maybe two thousand kilowatt hours a year, some, some years. Depending on how much it produce. You're talking a whole different scale from this. The next part of this is what they started doing is they're not only stealing it for me now. Last year was L D twelve twenty two dash five point six or wherever the heck it was. They're taking the power they're stealing from me and giving it to me. People that can't pay their bills. So I don't know if that goes under this one too. So somebody that has the unfortunate circumstance that they can't pay their power bill. The power that they're stealing, there's no wonder what they're taking it for me, I made the capital investment, I'm producing the power. They're not paying for me and it's a, it's the perfect social socialist store that you could ever imagine. Now they're gonna give it to somebody that can't afford to pay their power. Why would anybody want to make a capital investment to give the power away to somebody else? When they put me in a position where I might have to buy it when I run short because they're stealing it from me. It's a really complicated thing, but you really should know. It's not as simple, I know Kent is advocating for this, but there's a lot of tricky, tricky points in this thing that. You're gonna put this thing online and go, oh, we didn't know about this, and those are the things that I have concerns about.
Delivery. Turtles, the first page of his power bill.
Yeah.
Shows the delivery charges.
I wish I had it with me.
And that's holes and wires.
Yeah, 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 well, well, it's like they said, I'm, I'm thirteen dollars and seventy three cents.
Just the minimum charge.
Yes, yeah, to be connected to grid. The other thing is your, in your proposal, does that account for the transformers? Cause if you go over a certain kilowatt hour system, you have to buy a special transformer.
Part, the part of the proposal and part of the reason that. The transfer station is a pretty good location is that three, three phase power is across the street. So it's about uh two, three hundred feet away from the property. And uh, the company that has uh given us a proposal is familiar with connecting into the grid. And getting, working with C M P, as hard as that might be, to make those sorts of connections and the transformers involved. So you're right, it's, it's, it's not a residential, it's not a seven hundred volt connection, it's a three phase power deal. And the wires are only a short way away, so it's actually pretty economical to.
Really wasn't that, it was the more you're making, the larger the transformer has to be, because I went with a seven point two in lieu of a ten point one. Going to the ten point one, I had, I was gonna have to drop another four or five thousand dollars in my own.
Right. So in this particular case, you, we're not dealing with residential capacity, we're dealing with three phase power.
Yeah.
We gotta have three wires to, to, to make it run because there's that many panels.
Right.
And, and so this is more of a commercial type of installation.
We get that, it, it, what I'm asking is that covered in your proposal?
Yes, the interconnection cost, there's, there's been a portion of their budget that's been allocated to interconnection cost.
I haven't, I didn't see that part. You, I think Mike said on the head of the world in his comments, where he said, this is really complicated. And I think we heard at the last light meeting, every reason why we shouldn't consider this. Um, we won't, I'll need to try to go back into all that, it was a late session, I think there's been a lot of good comments here tonight, but. Aside from all the issues that I think Mike just raised about the unknowns. Do, and the, and the decommissioning, I think that's one of the main concerns. Um, I think it just plain ugly, it's gonna be good, if we put that down transfer station, that's gonna remind me of the open dump days when we burn pile the trash. Almost that ugly. But for a host of reasons, I would implore you not to put this on the warrant, thank you.
Well, I, sorry, go ahead. My take on this, um, I've done some more research, um. Everybody in here has probably received a little letter in the mail saying if you'll sign on to a community solar project, we'll save you fifteen percent on your, on your bill. Um, that's all great for people that wanna do that, but that money still has to come in. So that fifteen percent you're gonna save now is dispersed to the other people that are not buying into that project. Um, everybody's C M P bill is going up and it's to help pay for the subsidies that are going on. I've got a couple of really good articles here that were in the Bangor Daily News over the last month. One of them um is titled Electricity Costs to Increase More Than Expected Due to. Community solar farms, and the other one is titled How Community Solar Incentives Will Cost Means Or Us The Most. People that can't afford to buy solar panels, um, their bill's still going up. Um, and that's why the, the numbers on this thing, um, going over it. Um, I think we're gonna end up paying the same in the end, um, if not more with, with unknown things. Um, and we can discuss this all night, but at this point, I'm gonna move that we opt for the uh. The warrant that does not include um the solar panels on there. And if someone wants to second that, we can continue discussing it all night, but I'm gonna make the motion that we um go without the warrant. Without the solar panel project on it.
I'll second that.
Strangely enough, I don't know, strange, but right now, uh, and I, I was just noticing that Jenny. Kurt's name is on this uh. And he was somewhere, he was always searching around for the best deal for our electricity. Uh, as I remember, you know, cause, and he would uh tell us occasionally when he changed his. The, the, wherever we're getting it. And uh, and it's uh, it's coming from a solar company. In um. All right there, uh. Yes, I thought it was Linda who did it, but she was big on solar, but it's actually got Kurt's name here. Uh, from a company in Texas, uh, Constellation. An excellent company, Houston, Texas. And Kurt's names on it here. So, but we, as far as if you're worried about our carbon footprint, where we're getting our. The power that all our public buildings are using, it's coming from solar. Somewhere, could be in, you know, Nevada, uh, yes.
And question for you, you mentioned quite briefly, you mentioned something about the way the federal incentives are. Uh, in place now for solar, that the bills get paid a hundred percent or whatever, however you said that, that phrase. And if we change presidents and that changes, so we back up to where we were that.
Well, uh, you know, I don't know. I mean.
That's a situation that could happen.
It is a situation that could have happened seven years ago for the town of Arundel. Who, by the way, is no longer paying electrical costs right now. So we all opened our C M P bills. Uh, in January, and the town of Arundel opened theirs and it was still thirteen dollars a meter for them. Because they've done this process six years ago and are paying no C M P increase this year.
The whole town?
The whole town of Arundel. So, uh. The municipality, municipality. For all moving to Arundel.
Yeah.
So, uh, I. The question before us tonight is should the voters decide or should we decide? Really, the question before us tonight is, is this idea far enough along? To uh put it on the ballot and have a debate about the pros and cons. Um, to allow the voters of Monmouth to decide. And you know, I, I, uh. I heard a lot of conversation at the last meeting and I think it's important. Um, that, you know, uh, hard questions be asked, and I think it's important that some of those questions get answers. Um, but in the end, uh, uh, whatever the select board decides tonight. If it is for including this uh solar proposal. Um, just because it's recommended by the select board doesn't necessarily mean the voters are going to approve it. I mean, we just had a measure on the last ballot.
Believe me, they don't get it.
We just had a measure.
Majority of the voters that come in to vote do not get that. If it says yes, the selectmen, they're checking off yes.
Unless. Right.
And I'd like a quarter, if I'm working the election, I'd like a quarter for every person that comes up and asks me about this article. Because they're not gonna understand, if, if they haven't been sitting at these meetings, they will not understand it.
Recommended no on an article.
Well, madam, madam, if I might, if I might say something, the, the voters of Monmouth. Voted for us to be the, the select board.
Yeah, exactly.
We have trust in them. I think they should, the voters of Monmouth, you shouldn't think that they don't have. Enough sense to research the, and, and you can make your pitch to them. I think they should be allowed to vote on this issue, and I think the best proposal is the second one.
I, I'd also point out that um, the last time we had a townwide vote, the select board recommended a measure that was turned down.
Yeah, I know they do it sometimes. Majority of the time, and I have been there.
Sure.
They don't, and then they come up and ask and. I mean, I, I've been sitting here and I know some of the answers, but I, I can't say anything. It's like you, you have to go and reread it if you don't understand it. And the, and then that's the majority of the time that they are voting no, and it could be a very good thing that they should be voting yes for, you just never know.
So I appreciate that uh, uh, that this board has been able to work together on other issues. That we agree on, and we seem to be doing that quite smoothly. We are uh in, we're not in agreement on this issue, and I'm okay with that. And uh, we can still be neighbors and be friendly and be cooperative on other things, that's all good. And if we need to debate this, like we did, whether or not there should be a solar moratorium the last time around. Um, we can do that too. Uh, but as far as I'm concerned, um, I will be voting no on the motion. Uh, respectfully, and uh, and I think uh. Me, uh, the results of our last election show that the voters can develop an opinion of their own. That doesn't necessarily mean they're following the recommendations of the select board. And I also think that if we don't put it on the ballot for the voters to consider, then it's a done deal. We're telling the voters, uh, they don't get a choice.
Um, can I say something? Yes, this is Ginger Jordan Hill, you're not Chuck Hillier, and I, I agree with Kent and I agree with Joe's. And I agree with Joe that I, as a voter, would like to have the chance to decide. Um, I also wonder if. Um, some people think that this will be a more, uh, uh, an issue with more questions. If we can't have a sheet at the polls, if people have additional questions. So that the people working at the polls don't have to answer it, but can hand them that sheet.
But my last take on this is, um. You don't have to jump into this right now. Um, it's kind of like heat pumps, when they came out fifteen years ago, people started buying them, it's like, yeah, I'm not sure that's a good thing. Um, but as time went by, there were huge improvements in them, and now everybody's putting in heat pumps, they're an awesome unit. They work great, they do what they're supposed to do, they save people a lot of money. Um, solar panels may get to that point, but I don't think we're quite there. Um, and there's nothing that says we can't consider this moving forward if the numbers work out. So we're saving a lot more money rather than just being close to breaking even. I may be in favor of it someday, but today is not the day for me.
And the same with me, I mean, when you look at this paying three hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in interest. Over twenty years, so by the time you're done paying for this, they've essentially reached the end of their service of a life. So, you know, we're all used to that, I mean, you buy a car, you have a five year loan, you're hoping you get ten or fifteen years out of it. But we're gonna be paying, you know. Half as much in interest on this, more than half in interest, so I've just been like, it's, it's, it's insanity.
So Chris, I, I appreciate hard questions and I appreciate the scale of the numbers that we're talking about. Um, the interest that you see before you, the interest charge that you see before you is if. We got no federal incentives between thirty and forty percent of it, which the government, federal government.
Interest if we use the bonding. From under, so, and you know, even when we were looking at the ten year numbers. It's still, and I was generous, I said, well, when if we're paying for forty five thousand dollars a month in interest. It's, it would take seventeen years to offset that. In ten, the, the ten year loan, so when you're taking that debt service and dividing it by forty five thousand dollars. It's seventeen years, so before you're at a break even. So none of it makes sense to me, so.
Chris.
Keep telling me that it's free. Nothing is free, nothing is free. The money comes from somewhere.
The money comes, that's correct, the money, thirty to forty percent of it comes from the federal government. And if we decide, if we just, you're right, it is our money, and if we decide to let some other municipality take that money. Then we will pay their grants with the federal dollars that we have given the federal government. If we sit on our hands and we say, uh, this is not the right time for the town of Monmouth. Then other municipalities like the town of Arundel will take advantage of it and they will take our federal dollars. That's how that works, and if you look at the top value, the top line value of five hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for this system. You should immediately, if you're going to be fair in the accounting world. And calculate the credits and debits very precisely, take forty percent, thirty percent off of that figure. Because that is what the federal government will give us in return as a grant.
Supposedly, so we've got to get to that point. Supposedly. So we've got to get to that point first. Mike, did you have something you wanted to add?
There's another aspect of this. I think I don't have your skills in economics, that's for sure. But I know if you amortize your capital investment, you're talking about. A six-year payoff, then then it's free. Everything's free and it's like mana from the heavens and we're all getting free power. But if this is truly green energy and truly sustainable, wouldn't you be. Wanting to take money and put it into Espero to replace those panels? As they degrade one to two percent per year in in that time slot where it's free so you can replace it? Or do you just want to leave a, oh, it's done, we're just gonna walk away from it? I mean, that's not sustainable. That doesn't even make any sense as far as it's green. We're gonna save the planet. You make this mess of a of a of a solar farm and then we're gonna. What are we gonna do with it? Just walk away from it? Oh, yeah, we're gonna decommission and bury him somewhere or it's gonna be recycled in some third world country? Or are we gonna take a real holistic look at this thing and see it for what it is?
Thanks for the question. Um, uh, I don't believe I have ever said in front of this board. That this is about carbon footprint or being green. What this is about is saving the town approximately half a million dollars over twenty years. According to our projections. And at the end, having a full, over full accounting. For decommissioning, if that's what makes it make sense. If there is, it makes sense to be replacing panels at that point, then future select boards can make that decision. Um, what I know from the figures we're looking at tonight, both the financing piece. As well as the uh the bid that we have received for constructing this from a reputable firm. Is that we will be paying CMP, uh instead of paying CMP, we'll be paying the bank. For somewhere between twelve and thirteen years. And we'll still have seven years of warranted life left on those panels. And that that means the panel's performance is guaranteed to some extent until they're the end of uh the warranty period. As as I'm sure you know, panels oftentimes last twenty-five or thirty years, in which case.
Um, maybe not everybody understands the difference between a guarantee and warranty. Because that, yeah, I I I think we're splitting hairs again with, you know, so what, how can they get, how are they gonna warranty it? It's gonna be like.
The manufacturer has a bond.
They they're gonna, it's gonna be like a refrigerator. It's gonna be, it's a refrigerator, it's gonna be prorated. So it's like, yeah, you should have got twenty years out of it, but you got fifteen and we're gonna give you the the five years that you should have had.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. So the so the warranty, the warranty period.
That's not a guarantee. So everybody knows that is not a guarantee.
Right. There's a built-in process of of uh of the warranty, which is a half a percent of performance a year. Um, that's part of the warranty and that's pretty typical for the industry standard. And yet still, and this is why we're here. The original proposal put uh put forward by the Buxport uh solution. Will give the town fifty-six hundred dollars a year for the next twenty years, a hundred and eight thousand dollars in total for twenty years with no inflation adjustment. This proposal gives the town a half a million dollars of benefit per year. I'm sorry, half a million dollars over twenty years. And that inflation proves our electric bills for that period of time as well. After twenty years, there could very well be, there probably will be, but we're not gonna count on it, some additional value that the town would enjoy. Maybe it's time to recycle those panels. By the way, recycling doesn't necessarily mean taking them apart or sending them to a landfill. We've got recycling going on at the top of the hill above the transfer station today. Fast Eddie has got panels that spent twenty years in California. He's installed them in his yard and he's using them. They are only two hundred watt panels, but you know what? He's using them and he's happy with their performance. And that's called recycling. So um, there's a lot of different ways to recycle and twenty-five, twenty years from now. I'm sure there'll be some brand new ideas about the right way of handling those things that make sense.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, can I be recognized?
Yes.
Um, there's been a motion made, it's been seconded. We have fully debated the issue. As to whether the citizens of the town of Monmouth should be able to vote on a solar project. We have fully discussed it. I move now that we take a vote.
All those in uh favor of um. Mark, Mark made a motion and Chris seconded it to uh. Omit the solar uh. Project. All all those in favor. All those opposed. Thank you. The uh, Mark's motion passes. I, my own, but I'll just express my opinion why I voted the way I did. I I don't feel, I feel like we can't bring this to. People, to the voter, without much more, uh, a much more clearer picture. Of uh, the whole situation, what, but you know, what's gonna cost, what our costs are now. Uh, and uh, it it's to me, it it seems like we need to have it, it it. Uh, more firmly in uh uh understood. I think uh, as people have said that. A a lot of voters will not understand. The complications of all this. I don't understand it all. So uh. And I'm just a ordinary voter. Uh. Anyway, so that's why I voted the way I did. So uh. Onto.
Are there any other changes to the warrant? Otherwise, okay. Other than the uh numbering.
Yeah.
I'll fix any, and the grammatical error that, yes.
In motion.
Yes, yes. And I'll send this to the signature sheet around.
I make a motion. To approve the twenty twenty-three town warrant. Version three.
Second.
It was a motion by Chris, second by uh uh Mark. To approve version three of the warrant with the suggested changes. Uh, was in favor. Joe. You in favor or opposed?
Come on, what what's the vote so far? I haven't, I'm not able to see.
Uh, there's four votes, yes.
I'm gonna abstain.
Didn't receive the AP warrant before I left my peers. So I'll have to do it at the opposite at the next. Actually, I could, I could check on my phone. Hold on.
I just didn't.
Consent that I have. I I think I can see it. General Fire Safety Inc. here for the uh, environment one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Allegiance Trucks, this is the plow truck one hundred and seventy thousand six twenty-five that we. Is that you?
No, that's us.
Oh, I'm sorry, the police department. I'm sorry, I made an. Uh, I made an assumption there.
You can have that bill. I can put it on.
Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Prophecy Watershed District, their third assessment, seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-nine. Cocknowaggin Trailblazers, annual snow bill refund, two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. ABN Oil Heating Fuel, eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Anequalization Consultants, this assessing agent, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. A Municipal Association Workers' Comp, fourteen thousand one fifty-five. Main Hers, five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. Mission Square Retirement Payments, three thousand eighty-four. A Municipal Employees Health Trust, twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-five. Ludwig Salt Company, two thousand nine hundred and eighteen. Burke Auto Group. One thousand eight twenty-eight. Is that something for you, Paul? Okay, that was a fuel tank, thank you. The one that was leaking?
Yes.
Got that bill too. I put that one up on here.
Uh, State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. United Construction and Forestry Loader Maintenance or Repair, one thousand fifteen. For a grand total of two hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. I move with a warrant number twenty for fiscal year twenty-two point three. Second.
So it's a motion by Mark, uh, second by Ken to pay warrant number. All those in favor. Joe says yes.
I make a motion, me adjourn.
That always gets you to have.
Access and put access down there. I think maybe that would make it clearer.
Add, okay.
So if you just put exit, ex-excess down here.
Don't you want me to put it in like brackets? So it's like negative?
Negative. Yes, I think that that would work. That would make the math. As opposed to being it up here, you know, since it's mentioned up there, just put it down. I think that would work. That was the only desired part.
Because that's one of those things, right? It's a, it's a bond. If you had so much money, that is a, that is a. That's a bond bank bond. So you can't pay the principal. So all I can do is reduce.
So, yes.
The annual payment for a few years, just because that's the best way to keep it off the taxpayer. But other than that, it's not useful.